Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you to our regular LaSour City Council meeting dated April 10, 2023. This time, we will call the meeting to order.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and we're gonna be invisible, there'll never be any injustice for all.
Council members, you were all presented with this week's package with the agenda for the tonight's meeting, and we'll try and review it. With the addition, with the addition of item B, C, which are going to be in our agenda, which is the considered the updated Department Code for Conduct and Building Policies. So for that, I'm going to take a motion to accept the mate's agenda. I will thank you, Mr. Swaber. Seconded by Councilmember Williams. Any discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? The ayes have. Moving on to presentations, we will begin with Mr. Robie, and you can introduce everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, it's our pleasure to administer the oath of office to the LaSour Police Department's newest full-time officer, Mr. Billy Mattson. I invite Chief Aaron Tiki and Officer Mattson up, and Chief Tiki will administer the oath.
Before we do though, I just want to introduce Billy Mattson. He's our newest full-time officer as part of the two positions that were approved for the 2023 Police Department kind of officer staffing expansion. Billy comes with us, to us, with a little bit of experience. He was in Montgomery for three, about three years, and also worked for Waspege County Sheriff's Office for a year after that. So we had a great candidate with, or a great officer with good experience. And his family are fairly local. They live in the Montgomery area. So we're excited to have him here. He's about three quarters of the way through his training, and it's progressing well and going very well. So we're happy to have him. We're lucky to have him. And tonight's a great opportunity for you guys to put up a face with the name and meet him. So you recognize him if you see him out on the street, which he will be, he is out on the street now in his training program, but about another three weeks and he'll be rolling around on active patrol. So you'll see him out and about. So Billy, I just asked that you raise your right hand and feet after me. Sir Billy Mattson.
I am Sir Billy Mattson.
You solemnly, solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of a police officer.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of a police officer.
Within and for the city of LaSour.
Within and for the city of LaSour.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
Congratulations. Glad to have you on.
Thank you.
I would like to, starting with Councilmember Tui, to work her way through. Congratulations.
Thank you. Like too. Congratulations.
I wish it was something. Chief Tiki, thank you for administering.
Yeah. I'm gonna stick around because there's some discussion about the sergeant.
Moving on to the consent agenda, all items on consent agenda are considered routine and have been made available to the City Council at least two days in advance of the meeting. These items will be enacted on motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member or citizen so requests, at which event this item will be removed from the agenda and considered in normal sequence. City Administrator Robie, you want to review those with us, please?
I would. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we have several items on the consent agenda. One of which, item B, I will, at the end of my summary, invite Chief Tiki to share a few words on that personnel action item. The first on tonight's consent agenda is approval of the minutes from last regular meeting, March 27, 2023. Item B, approved personnel action, a promotion to the position of sergeant for current LaSour Police Department Officer, Izzy Sines. Item C, approved personnel action, hiring a part-time building and grounds maintenance, Mr. Brian Whites. And D, approved an update to the 2023 depositories. Through the formality, if there are any questions, feel free to ask me at the end of the summary here, but mostly a formality. Item E, approved final payment application, which is payment application number three to partner asphalt sealers for the airport pavement maintenance project. Item F, approved payment activation number 19, the landmark structures for the new water tower. Item G is Resolution R 2023-13. It's our 2023 Arbor Day proclamation. Item H, approved water and wastewater engineering consultant pool for the next five years. And item I, approved dispersments through today, April 10, 2023. Included in those purchasers, included in those dispersments are several items over $25,000. The first, MNPA for March 2023 purchase power, $617,182.4. Second, to the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust, the 2023 liability and auto insurance premium payment, $175,300. Third, to the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust, 2023 workers' compensation insurance premium, $130,138. Fourth, to Minnesota Department of Revenue, the March 2023 city sales tax, $44,685. And finally, to the LaSour County Predator 2023 property taxes, $25,470. Before I invite Chief Tiki, I'll ask if there are any questions on consent agenda.
Sure.
Officer Sines.
So as you're all aware, we're adding those new positions that you approved to our police department to grow our full-time force from seven full-time officers to nine full-time officers. And part of that process has been determining how much supervision is needed to, needed to meet our needs. And traditionally and historically, the LaSour Police Department has operated with a chief and two sergeants, two senior officer positions. Currently, we have a chief, one sergeant, and then six patrol officers below that sergeant. And it's just apparent with the shift work that we work, it's imperative that we have a supervisor on seven days a week, whether that's myself as the chief or one of the sergeants working. Now, obviously, with only three people in leadership positions, we can't have a supervisor on 24 hours a day, but we can do, we can have one on seven days a week. That's very important when officers are tasked with making real-time in-the-field decisions, making sure they're following policy, procedure, and just correctly addressing any situation at hand. So as our standing has developed, we felt the need to, to have that second, or reinstate that second sergeant's position, which we traditionally have always had prior to myself being promoted to chief. And then Josh, Josh Flasback doing sergeant's position, which left us with just a chief and sergeant instead of a chief and two sergeants. So we started that process at the beginning of March. And with discussion within the department and with the leadership team, we decided we would post that both internally and externally to try to find and draw the best possible candidate we could find for that position. And we knew we had some really strong internal candidates. We weren't sure exactly who would all would apply or would be interested in the position. But we knew that we had some really strong candidates within our department, but I, we also knew that we could draw in a fairly strong candidate from outside, too, just to see who we could get. And we ended up with seven total applicants for that position. Three were internal and four were external. No, excuse me, four were internal and three were external. Four were internal, three were external. We offered six interviews and ended up doing five interviews. One person dropped out prior to the interview process, an external candidate did. We had a very careful and lengthy interview process that was carefully scored by the leadership team and interview panel. We also scored the applications and resumes that were submitted by the candidates. And after doing all that, we had a clear frontrunner in Officer Hazing Sines, who has been with the LaSour Police Department for only about two and a half years, but he has experience with the Minneapolis Police Department prior to that, Man Kill Police Department prior to that. And through his time here to and after this year, he's definitely taking on a leadership role in a short time. He's he's got a great work ethic. He strives to make the department better in any way that he can. He's very professional. We're lucky to have Officer Sines and now Sergeant, hopefully Sergeant Sines here working in LaSour with us. He's definitely been an asset to our department. And we're excited to promote him into a leadership role, and I think he'll step into that role and fulfill it well. So that's kind of the status that we are at with that sergeant's position. That leaves us, since we have an internal position from officer sergeant, that leaves us with an officer vacancy. So we will again have to initiate that police officer hiring process to try and find one more police officer, so then we will be at full staff with a chief, two sergeants, and six patrol officers. So we'll have nine full-time staff once we get that final position filled, which is exciting for to fill our schedule, will help with manpower investigations, help getting some of our officers some much-needed time off. They're working quite a bit overtime in order to fill our schedule and fill shifts. That would be nice surrounding their families as well. So if you have any questions, I can field any questions that you might have.
Should the consent agenda be passed tonight, then Chief Tiki and I would bring Sergeant Sines back at the next meeting for an oath of office as sergeant.
Any council members with any questions for Chief Tiki regarding item 5B? Thank you. Appreciate it. With that, I want to take a motion to thank you, Councilmember Swaber. Councilmember Shiger seconded. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? The ayes have. Moving on to public comment before we read this. Do we have anybody signed up? Mr. Swaber, if you don't mind, thank you. Oh, nothing there. Thank you. Which leads us to the city administrators update. Mr. Robie, do you want to share whatever you got to share with us?
I would. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I've got a few items tonight to share, and as always, feel free to interject any questions as you as you may have them or save them for the end. First of all, we have a new face in the room. I'd like to welcome Lindsay Day. She knows you're gonna call attention to her. So sorry. We're thrilled to have Lindsay here as our city clerk. She started last Monday. And she comes to us with a wealth of experience and an experience in the city of Jordan and prior to that, for the city of Patterson for a number of years. So I'm thrilled to have her aboard. You'll see her forefront of City Hall. Elementary school plan review. So our conversations with the school district continue around the planning for their new elementary school. That process is pretty close to wrapping up now. The planning commission this Thursday will review the planned unit development application for the school. The primary purpose of the planned unit development is to acknowledge the fact that this is a unique development involving more than one building on one parcel. And so planning commission will review that application this Thursday, and I expect to see a recommendation then from the planning commission out of that meeting Thursday to come to City Council, the April 24 meeting, to consider approval of the application. Similarly, as I mentioned last time, the developers agreement will also come to City Council. And the developers agreement again will handle things such as during the construction process, if there are any public public property damage, any infrastructure that damages part of the construction that the district will ensure that the repairs are made and ensure that the stormwater system is maintained throughout the duration of the new building, things like that. Tomorrow, the mayor and Councilmember Williams and I have a meeting at Ridgeview LaSour Medical Center to discuss Councilmember Williams is a city council representative to the Ridgeview LaSour Medical Center local board to meet with some of the members of their leadership team to discuss what's new at RLC, what's happening, what's on their plate. So I'm looking forward to that meeting tomorrow morning. Also, tomorrow at LaSour County, over at the courthouse in the center is the review and equalization open book meetings from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. tomorrow. It's, I look at it as taxpayers' opportunity to go to the county if they would, if they have concerns about the way their property was assessed. So this is from 6:00 a.m. to, excuse me, from 10:00 a.m. tomorrow to 6:00 p.m. tomorrow. The public property owners within LaSour County can go to the courthouse and share their concerns about property assessments. Friday morning, I'm scheduled to attend a think-take session with Greater Mankato Growth. Greater Mankato Growth is going through somewhat of a comprehensive plan process where they're looking at the next 10 to 15 years of the Greater Mankato area, and as part of that, they are partnering with Region 9 Development and some other organizations to conduct some planning sessions and listening sessions. And so I municipalities within LaSour County were invited to be, to be part of that. So I plan to attend that Friday morning. March 31, I attended South Central Healthcare Coalition Emergency Preparedness Meeting, which was great. They had a speaker there to discuss some high-level points on crisis communication. It's appropriate that Chief Tiki and and our communication major director, Stacy Lawrence, are here today. Because in the last couple of weeks, we've had some opportunities to exercise our local crisis communication efforts, specifically with our partners at the LaSour Anderson School District. And so they had really good information on that, and they're actually holding a session coming up on April 13 that Stacy's planning to attend. That's focused on crisis communication, how to bring the right partners on board, things to consider, important notes, do's and don'ts for the role of public information officer in the event that the city were to ever need to send up our emergency operations center. They have a great valuable training and tools, the Healthcare Coalition, and so it is geared toward healthcare, and that's frankly, the reason I ever got involved with it. It's applicable across jurisdictions, and so there are representatives outside of healthcare that attend as well, and they're encouraging not only municipalities and law enforcement, but also now schools to attend their training because it is so applicable across multiple areas of our communities. And speaking of the, the recent crisis communications that we've engaged with the school district, and I would like to give a kudos to our leadership team and Chief Tiki and in particular, for their leadership during the social media-related instances at the school district. Some concerning language that you likely saw, and this is covered in local news, but situation was handled very, very well, very, very professionally by, by Chief Tiki and, and with Stacy's guidance as we work through the best way to communicate with a large group of people when the incident involves both the LaSour Police Department and our local schools. That's a very, very large audience and a very, very sensitive audience. And so we had a really great debriefing session with Superintendent Jim Wagner following one of these events where we ensured that we're really on the same page, we're communicating the same thing, we're communicating consistently to the right population. And we've got nowhere to go but up from here. And so I really appreciate our internal team for their leadership throughout that. We had this on a Facebook page, but we received notice last week that our, our electric department was named one of 219 utilities nationwide recognized for their excellence in reliability, which is great. It's one of the things that I think we all take for granted. Reliability of our electricity in our homes and businesses, and our electric department does a phenomenal job. So I'd like to acknowledge them for all the hard work that they put in to, to make sure that our lights stay on and our oxygen tanks keep running and our pumps keep running and everything. We've got a great crew. And finally, it's appropriate because of the weather today, but the city, all of our city departments are actively switching seasons, beginning the process of taking the clouds down and getting ready for summer months. So we've had some updates today. We're getting a new water heater that will be installed at the outdoor pool. The current one is was probably on its last, like, several years ago, and so that was proved as part of the capital budget for this year. So we're looking forward to having that in-house here by mid-June. We're in the process of doing our seasonal hiring. Stacy's done a great job leading that process. Street sweeping, you see, seeing the street sweepers out and about, and they'll continue to move about as the rest of the snow melts. Citywide cleanup, as we have every spring. This will be May 6. Arborday tree sale. Public Works Department is currently selling trees at cost to property owners within the city. And that runs through, I'm sorry, Stacy, do you happen to remember?
Friday.
Through Fridays. We have to the end of the week. Thank you. And those forms are available here at City Hall. They're also on our website and social media. And then likely at the next meeting, I'll be bringing something forward to City Council. I'll discuss with the mayor, but a number of years ago, in line with the Arbor Day conversation, there's a program, it's a public partner, public-private partnership called Green Step Cities. And you see it sometimes when you drive through Belt Plains, Jordan, they have a little emblem outside their city that says they're a green step city. What it does is it's, it's a public and private partnership at no cost to the city to provide resources for moving the city forward from a resiliency and sustainability standpoint. So the city of LaSour has already taken a lot of the steps that they recommend this part of this program. So we're already ahead of the game. This is just formally, I would like to formally bring the city into this program to allow us to have access to some of these resources that other cities have when it comes to training, when it comes to grants, things like that. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for our city administrator? We will move on to the regular agenda then. We will start with the R 2023-14 protocol for public hearing on the hosting of Ridgeview Medical Debt Issuance. If you want to explain that, Mr. Robie.
I would. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To be clear, this Resolution R 2023-14 is simply a resolution calling for a public hearing. That's all the action tonight does. Should this pass, the public hearing itself, and a vote for City Council to consider what's in front of you would be held at the April 24 meeting, simply to call for the public hearing to be held at the next meeting. The, the story behind this is, so the city of LaSour has utilized conduit financing in the past, which is where the city municipality will sell bonds on behalf of, in the city of LaSour's case, Minnesota Valley Health Center. Back in 2010, the city of LaSour issued debt on behalf of Minnesota Valley Health Center, Minnesota Valley Health Center can take advantage of some tax exempt status on some bonds to benefit the medical campus. It's back in 2010. Ridgeview Medical Center is looking to do the same thing. Instead of using the city of LaSour as a conduit, however, they're planning to use the city of Chaska. City of Chaska will be issuing revenue bonds, and as part of that process, the IRS requires if you're going to borrow in the city of Chaska and spend that money anywhere outside of the city of Chaska, wherever that money's going to be spent, that municipality has to agree to host that debt. It doesn't put us under any obligation, fiscally or otherwise. Essentially, the governing body, the municipality, has to agree that, okay, yes, you can list us as a host of this debt. Ridgeview Medical, I don't know how the arrangement will be made, but Ridgeview Medical will likely name the city of Chaska, will then in turn pay the bondholder, like in our case, where the city of LaSour makes bond payments to First Farmers and Merchants, who holds the debt on the hospital. EDA makes payments to US Bank, and then in turn Ridgeview Medical, Ridgeview Medical Center pays the city and the EDA to make those payments. It's a pass-through. Chaska's gonna do the same for, for Ridgeview Medical Center. And of the revenue bonds right now, a million dollars is estimated to be going into LaSour Ridgeview Campus. So that's the action will be in front of council on the April 24 meeting. This action tonight is simply to call for a public hearing, which is required by the IRS to be held before a city can approve becoming a host for the city of Chaska.
Thank you. Any council member have any questions for Mr. Robie regarding this resolution? Without a change of motion, we'll approve Resolution R 2023-014, calling public hearing, hosting of the city of Chaska issuance of revenue bonds on behalf of Ridgeview Medical Center. So move. Thank you, Councilmember Huntington.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Swaber. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Hi.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have. Moving on to item 8B, city administrator performance evaluation process. Mr. Robie, I don't make you wait about this too much. I've been visiting Stacy about this item. So she's gonna take us on the road. This will be very similar to what we did last year, council members, Mr. Tui. It's, you may or may not know, we do an evaluation on our city administrator once a year, much like all the employees of the city are evaluated by their supervisors. We are his supervisor. And the process is going to be somewhat similar to what we did last year for city administrator accrual. I'll let you kind of explain how we're going to do that. Our Human Resources and Communication Director, Stacy Lawrence.
Hi, everybody. Hi, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. So as Mr. Robie provided here in the summary, so each year where we perform, you perform a performance evaluation for the city administrator. So on May 1st, we're coming up on Joe's first year of service, the city administrator. So we're gonna get this process rolling for him. So what we'll do is each council member will complete a performance review form. The scores are average, and then presented to the Personnel and Budget Committee for review and discussion. So what we've done in years past has varied slightly. Last year, we used Survey Monkey, and I think that worked the best. It tallies the scores for me. I can give them to you in a very nice presentation. You can see graphs. We can get details. It provides comments. It'll outline the comments that you have all included in your survey. So I recommend that we continue to go with that as Mayor and I talked about, we can do a paper copy of that as well, if anybody would rather do that than logging to Survey Monkey completed. So after we get these completed, Personnel and Budget Committee will meet, and then subsequently we'll hold a closed session with a formal discussion. So it'll be more like one-on-one interview that you'll have the opportunity to have a discussion with Joe during that closed meeting, and then we provide a summary of that closed meeting at the meeting after that. So does anybody have any questions? Or, Mr. Mayor, do you have anything else that you wanted to add?
Can you kind of go through the timeline of all of this? I don't, he's creeping up on a year with the, with the city, and you want to do this in time with that?
Yes, correct. So as we spoke today, I will have the survey link out to all of you directly by the end of this week, and so I decided you'll get a week to complete it. So I don't have time here for me, but a week from this Friday.
You'll get this on May 14th, and you have until April 1st. I'm sorry, April 14th, you have until the 21st of April to complete it.
Correct. And then we'll get the Personnel and Budget Committee members together to have, discuss, I think, if all of that aligns well, unless we have any hiccups, I think we can plan to have a closed session on April 24th.
Anybody have any questions? So you've got a little bit of homework, and again, it's very similar to last year's. So you've got a little bit of homework. Um, and again, um, it's very similar to last year's survey. It's not real long. How many questions is it, Stacy?
Well, it'll be about three. So it is.
You misled me a little bit.
Well, okay, great. Um, so there's several sections too. It's broken up by sections, um, which I think is helpful, right? So some of the sections include leadership, there's, um, professionalism, focus on effective planning. So that kind of helps each section as you go through. So maybe it doesn't seem as long. What did I tell you today? I think they told you twenty-three.
Yeah, maybe. That's fine. That's fine. So I think once you start the survey, it's, it's pretty simplistic. There's, you've got an opportunity to add in, uh, any type of SD you might want to write or any type of, uh, input. And then it sends us back. I don't think it'll take more than fifteen minutes.
Yep, and there's ample sections, or ample room for comments in each section. So I won't, I won't have those as required. If you go through them, you don't have to add a comment. You could save comments for the end, but I think it's good feedback for Mr. Roby to have.
Any other questions? Got all those concerns with that? Thank you for reading us through this, Council.
You're welcome. I'll send you an email this week with the link.
Everybody watch for that if you would, please.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, no, uh, no action needed here. Thank you. Last item came out a little late today. I didn't see the, uh, recreation department, the building policies and code of conduct. Now, should, Mr. Roby, you want to explain this to us?
Would. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yes, this came out just today. Um, there wasn't shit. Um, the copying in front of them. So the, for a number of years now, the city has maintained a code of conduct and a set of building policies. These are made available to all members, uh, when a member signs up for a membership. They sign an agreement that says they abide by all the tenants of the code of conduct, and they will adhere to the principles outlined in the building policies. It's also available on our website, um, very standard language for any recreation facility to have. Um, it's a page from no glass bottles allowed in the community center unless otherwise approved by management. No running in, um, pool area, um, no shooting dogs in the hallway, all those things. Um, and, um, so, so recently, every few years or so, um, staff will review this, this last review in two thousand and twenty-one. And staff, that's the conversations that are, and leadership, leadership teams that have some conversations to amend a couple of the areas and, and really the, the key amendment here was the addition of some language that, um, allows staff, if they perceive that there is any concern for public health, safety, or well-being of any member or visitor, it allows, um, staff the discretion of to not allow someone into the community center. So the, the policy right now, in that the code of conduct essentially allows that, but it's, it's somewhat assumed by the language that's in there. I mean, the, the goal of the community center, ultimately, its mission is to provide a healthy, safe environment for our community to recreate. Um, and inherent in that is the ability for staff and ultimately for me to be able to determine if there is a, a, a threat to a healthy and safe environment that we're allowed to, um, to manage that threat in the most appropriate way possible. And we have already in there, there's, um, um, there are steps that we can take if someone violates one of the codes, um, of conduct. Give them a warning, we can suspend their membership for a period of time. Uh, but there's nothing that ultimately allows us to, um, disallow someone to utilize the community center. Um, and, um, that's, so that's the only material change that's being added, uh, proposed at this time. To give ultimately the city administrator in consultation with staff, um, the ability to make this as safe an environment as we possibly can. It was a late addition, um, because we didn't have follow-up language drafted, and I wanted to ensure that the city attorney had reviewed the language that was being proposed. Which is at the top of page three in the, um, the new version of the document.
Anybody have any questions for our city administration regarding this, Mr. Tui?
Just, uh, because I looked at this, I'm, I'm with it, but there's no date revision. I'm just suggesting that something be added. So, you know, two, three years down the road, when was the last time we looked at this?
Sure. That's a fair point. We can certainly have that. Right now, the way we do it is internal controls wise is the, the final file is saved as two thousand and twenty-three version, two thousand and twenty-one. But.
Because I've seen other, I've seen other documents that'll have a date on it, so you know, okay, I've got the break.
Yes. Well taken. And what we'll plan to do is whenever this, I don't, it's a future meeting, if this is approved, we would put council approved in the footer, council approved, April, maybe, in the footer. Yeah, thank you for that.
Good point. Thank you. Naveh, other comments? Otherwise, I want to do any motions to approve the updated recreation apartment building policies and code of conduct.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tui, uh, seconded by Mr. Solomon. Any other comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Anybody opposed? The eyes have it. Moving on to reports, items of appreciation, council members, this is your opportunity to share what's going on in community commissions. We will always start with Mr. Huntington.
I have nothing for tonight.
We'll get to Councilmember Schleter.
I have two upcoming meetings. Wednesday I have a Region Nine whole board meeting. And on Thursday, planning commission has a public hearing on the school district planned unit development.
Thank you, Councilmember Solomon.
I have nothing to report on today.
Councilmember Swanberg.
Uh, just to echo Administrator Roby, you know, congratulations to the electric department. That's a great honor. And also a shout out and thank you to the Lions Club for organizing the Easter morning egg hunt. It was very well done.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Tui.
Just along the same lines, I met a number of you up there at the, uh, high school on Saturday. And I thought they did a very nice job. I thought it was well-planned. It was, uh, interesting. And there were a lot of people there. It was good to see.
Thank you for attending. We appreciate that. Councilmember Williams.
Um, I did, can the ARPAC meeting, and there's, um, discussion about the Veterans Memorial and they're moving along with that. And the department's getting ready for spring, summer, whatever we're having. So, um, and again, my event was well done. Appreciate that. Event, a lot of eggs. And I hope that our place department, um, doesn't end up on the news and that they stay safe.
Appreciate a lot of, a lot of bad don'ts out there. Thank you. Um, I do not have anything to share tonight. I appreciate everybody's time and, uh, that's here tonight and, uh, with that, I will entertain motion close this evening. So move. Thank you, Councilmember Huntington. All those in favor?
Hi.
Anybody opposed?